We are recording and streaming, so we are good to go.
Okay, you have my American flag ready?
I'm pulling it up right now.
We'll call this regular session to order Wednesday, August 19th, time is 7:00 PM. Please let me allow me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get started on visitor comments, I'm going to read our city council mantra. Number one, I am a city councilor and advocate of quality and effective city services. I will do what I can to promote sensitive and professional services to city residents and visitors. I will do what I can to promote safe environment for business and families. Number two, it is my responsibility to contribute to a stabilized environment for the city. I am an opponent of uproar, dissension, and conflict. I believe in cooperation. Number three, I believe in routine. The greatest gift I can give city residents is provide services that are predictable. Number four, every comment I make and every vote I cast will be motivated by the question, what is good for the city residents and visitors? Number five, what I want for my family is what I want for all patrons of the city. Number six, I will champion the city. I will compliment and reinforce often. I will suggest and recommend when necessary. Number seven, I will support the majority position of the council. I may not agree, but once a vote is taken, I'm with the others. Number eight, I will never come to a council meeting having made a promise to an individual or a group. Number nine, at all times, I will remember I am a city official whose purpose is to serve and represent others and to act on their behalf. Number 10, courtesy is a rule. I will not break that rule. Number 11, the council meeting is a business meeting. It is not entertainment. It's not social hour. It is not question and answer session. It is a business meeting. And number 12, I am busy. Other council members are busy. The city staff and administrator are busy. Everyone is busy at this meeting. I will do what I have to do. I will do it as fast as possible, and I will respect the time of others. Okay, so now that we've got that out of the way, I'm going to open it up for visitor comments, and please keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Mayor, I do not see anybody from the public. It is just a few department managers that are joining.
All right. Okay, award bid contract. One, Samon Berry Timber sales to Olympic Forest Products, RSG, at $624 per 1,000 board foot. Two, purchase a mower to start the street lawn and garden for $13,549.47.
Move we approve award bid contracts, one and two as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve contracts one and two as read. All in, or let's go with roll call. Council President Morton.
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Yes.
Counselor Carlson?
Yes.
Counselor Topaz?
Yes.
And I was, yes, as well. Okay, approve and authorize for signature. I have, I have this in numbers, so I'm going to go. Do you guys have it in numbers on your?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, number three, additional service agreement with McKenzie for police needs assessment. Number four, agreement with Mall Foster, Longy, and Sykes Road Reservoir feasibility placeholder. Five, extension to concessions agreement with Shiverme Ice Cream Mobile Truck. And six, contract payments.
Point of order.
What?
Point of order.
Okay.
Having to do with the Mall Foster contract, since it's not a continuation of any particular project that's going on, I think it should be put out for bid. The other thing, I have a very big reservation on the last two major contracts from Mall Foster. They did not complete them, and mainly the public description of what they did or what they found, which was a major part of the contract. So I would like to have another way of looking at them. They have not done the job that they're contracted to do. They also, as I say, it's not a continuation of work, so we really have to go out for RFP.
I'd like to follow up on that and hearing the other side of the coin and see if Mr. Walsh can weigh in on his relationship and his take on Mall Foster, Longy.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Hopefully, my internet's more stable. I will apologize for your hardiness getting on here. So, a couple things there. There's, since the beginning, there, the two open contracts, the work is not complete, and that's not because of them. It's more because of the, we want to have a meaningful public engagement effort with the Lagoon product right there. Yes, it is open. It's not complete. There was not an end date on the contract. Second, we have a regarding Boise property in general, there's a special class of procurement for contracts related to that property. We did that several years ago for contracting in general. So the ability to, the requirements for contracting are pretty streamlined and efficient and allow fair amount of direct appointment to specialized people that are working with us. And third, we do have a special services agreement with them that is open-ended for various types of works and activities that are exactly like this.
And you explained that earlier in our work session, correct?
One of the things that I've had a preliminary look at the drilling group data and explanations, and there's some very, very big technical problems with that. That's one of the reasons why I think the public ought to hear what they've found out, or at least what their discussion is in their preliminary, I guess you would have to call it, report. Because two parts of the report contradict each other in a big, big way. And when I see what the technical parts are, these are numbers. To have them also do groundwork that's going to use the same type of technology that they did not do very well on the paper mill or the lagoon area, I have grave reservations for their ability to do a good job on the reservoir. And going back to city code, since this is not continuation work, this is absolutely a new study. Some of our usual procedures from going from one place to another do not apply. According to the city code, we really have to start over again.
So. Yeah, I'd be happy to share.
I think John. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Right, it's a resolution specific to what we're talking about and the services agreement. I can provide both those documents. Don't have them at my finger.
Sounds like it's fairly old.
Well, as I said, I'm looking. Go, John.
I'm sure you're looking at the city's contracting code, and I suspect.
Let's see, it's three, section F. And that talks about continuation and new projects. But that's, we'll say, the legal business of the RFP. The other problem is the fact those other two contracts, the, why the lagoon should be used as a dump, and the technical work on proving the satisfactory ground underneath the dump there. So that has to be presented to the public to show that Mall Foster is not doing a good job. That's what I'm pointing out. If you look at the data of the groundwork, there's some very, very big mistakes. And I'd like to see the DEQ analysis of that report.
DEQ has analyzed, I guess, two things there. One, that I've asked you for those comments to submit, so they can respond to them. And second, that DEQ has reviewed and approved the report.
The DEQ has gotten my report. I've sent it to them.
Yeah, and they've approved the MFA report.
But they have not replied to my report. Discussions of what they have seen, and we have some questions that have not been answered yet.
Steve, could you copy us? Could you copy the fellow, our fellow council members?
Yes, I can.
Of a report that you had sent to them, and so that we, so that we can see it?
Yes, I can. I can do that.
Yeah, I had no idea that Mr. Topaz was qualified in DEQ relationships and that he was submitting reports to DEQ on city's behalf.
I didn't send it on city's behalf. I sent it as an engineer. That's what I do real well.
Well, you're objecting as a city councillor right now, and you're bringing up a report that you submitted. So that's kind of.
What if it's downhill, whether I'm standing here or not, Rick?
In my opinion, this is my opinion, Counselor Topaz, like your opinion that Mall Foster is not doing a good job. It's your opinion. In my opinion, that's exactly what you're doing.
Well, when one reports temperature range and describes.
I'm not here to debate. I am not an engineer. I don't pretend to be an engineer, and I don't pretend to have a DEQ qualification, Counselor.
Then, then your opinion doesn't carry very much.
Likewise, and you're writing letters on our behalf.
No, it's not written letters on your behalf.
It's exactly what it looks like.
Well, I'm sorry. You're looking out the wrong eye.
Especially when it comes to city projects, and you are a city councillor, and you have not announced it to myself or to Counselor Morton, any councillor. Any councillor know of this?
No.
We just had.
I just want to make it very clear, Counselor Topaz, you are kind of out of order right now.
Well, you wanted me in the mantra to protect the city's interest, and that's what I did. And now you're telling me I'm not supposed to.
You're trying to use the mantra.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
I'd like to have a question. I guess it's for John. I guess it's a matter of just procedure. I guess I'm a little bit, as just a voter, I'm kind of bothered with just having another agreement for this agency when we haven't had updates with previous things we've done with them, and then just having that placeholder, like we just have this little flip there without, like, what are we doing? This just flips onto the evening agenda without any prolonged discussion of it. It just seems a little hurry, scurry for something that's not going to happen in the next two months. It's like we could have a little more process and maybe vet out the Mall Foster issues a little more thoroughly.
Well, Jan, I agree with that, in a sense, but Counselor Topaz brought up the issue that it wasn't finished. And, and so it's kind of a double-edged sword. If it wasn't finished, they were waiting for, you know, to start to get a public kind of input. So I, you know, it's, it's, it's really a tough one, and I was always under the influence that we had an agreement with Mall Foster, Longy from the get-go that they were our environmental consultants. Now, I don't know if that's an ongoing kind of a, an agreement, but maybe John can, can allude to that of, and, and maybe resolves Counselor Topaz's question of why we rely on Mall Foster, Longy. I know that they have the, one of the finest reputations in the, in North America for doing their, their type of work, and it's environmental cleanup. And it's, they have a good engineering staff, a good design staff. They've got numerous awards for, for their work. I, so, you know, I'm not quite certain where we're at with this, other than maybe, John, you can help us out a little bit.
Yeah, they, they have, they are our engineer, environmental engineer record. And how we've approached doing work with them is to bring individual tasks, work order basically, to the councils for, for authorization, just so the council knows where we're at with expanding funds and things, things of that nature. So each project that they work on, exactly that, they submit a budget and a scope of work, and comes to the council and gets approved. You know, the unfinished project is entirely COVID-related and want to have a meaningful outcome, rather than just a slammed process with these Zoom meetings and things.
Sorry, just because we're doing Zoom meetings, I mean, every time we've done stuff, I know this guy's face very well, because every time we contract them, I get to see him again, and we have kind of at least an overview of the scope of work or something. It's just this generic placeholder thing, and then no updates on the other. For as much money as they're earning through this, they could give us updates of where they are in the process and what next steps are. I mean, I've been very disappointed with, you know, updates on this process. It's like, where to go, where to go? And I mean, the community thinks that it's just out there in la-la land, which is, you know, kind of a little bit makes them kind of worried, like, what are we doing? And it's, you know, even if they, the update is, we're waiting for the COVID, or if the update is they're waiting for something else, or they're waiting for a clue from us, it's like to say nothing and continue writing more contracts with them with no FaceTime, no, I mean, no disrespect to the company at all. I'm just talking about process and procedure for our citizens. So I'm not saying they're bad at all.
I'm going to jump in and just state that this is to look at the Boise Cascade property up on Sykes Road for the reservoir that we've been talking about for years. Sue Nelson, I would like you to pipe in a little bit on this, if you could, is, is in a, probably one of the most perfect spots to help feed our city on that side of Sykes Road, so to speak, down Sykes. And it's been a very good targeted area for a water tower. And I just want to make that clear, that this is to look at what worked. That's what we're asking them to do, correct?
That's correct, to look and see if the site is suitable to hold a water reservoir of a certain size.
Five million gallons.
Ensure that the site is stable, that, because there, it is sloped, and we have looked at other sites in the past that have turned out to not be suitable because of landslide issues. So there's several places on this parcel that would be in the appropriate elevation range to serve our unincorporated areas as they start to annex in and develop.
And so they could help, even if they all work by identify the better one, one of the places, the best place.
Correct, yes.
And, yeah, I just want to clear up one thing, and, and this is for Counselor Topaz and, and for John and Sue to respond to. We do have, we do have firms that are on record for doing certain issues. Now, I can remember all the way back, Mayor, before your time, that we talked about Mall Foster being our consultants, and I don't, I can't remember if anything is signed, but on record, that's, we've stayed with them for all these years. Now, Counselor Topaz brings up a point. He thinks that, you know, maybe there's other firms out there that could be, you know, could be our consultants for environmental studies as well as, as well as Mall Foster. Seems like Mall Foster knows this, the, the region and what they're dealing, what they're dealing with. They've got a good history of doing a lot of studies here. And so I can see why John stays with them, or we haven't brought other firms forward to, to do studies. So, you know, I'm not certain what John and Sue, what you have to say about that, but we might, we might want to review some other, some other firms as well down the line. I'm not saying do it now, for heaven's sakes, but it might be something to put on the, on the future agendas.
Well, here's kind of what I'm upset about, is John did bring this up in his report, and it was brought up, and it wasn't discussed at that time. It was brought to this meeting when we had a work session, and we all were entertainments of that work session. Nobody was left out of it. This specific subject was brought up. And now we're, here we are into our regular session, getting ready to vote, and we could have the question and answer. And John even went and explained it earlier in our work session of how the agreement is set up and works and what it was for. A five million, you know, and he asked, he asked.
Discussion.
I, I bet you could go back and watch tape. He asks, is there any questions?
Well.
I remember it.
I'm going to ask Sue something about the landslides.
Counselor Topaz, I have, I have the floor right now.
Well, it's my turn.
Well, I was trying to explain the process here and how maybe we could be more fluid and get more work done. This could have came off the agenda earlier when John was explaining this, Counselor Topaz, but now I'm trying, so I'm trying to explain to you how our council meetings work.
You weren't there. You were at the doctors, so remember.
I was there. I'm on video. It was a lot, you almost adjourned. I was actually listening to you guys on my phone call. I was there on John's report for this particular portion of it.
No discussion of what we were doing.
Counselor, it's on record. I'm not going to sit here and debate.
I want Sue to discuss about landslides a minute.
So that would have been the time to actually bring it up in conversation to see about removing it from the agenda, because you have a copy of this as well as I do and as well as all the public does on Friday.
You're endangering the neighborhood, and now you're trying to go by process.
Counselor Topaz, I do not approve of your comment of saying that we are endangering the neighborhood.
Okay, can I?
That is not true, Counselor Topaz.
Landslide.
Counselor Topaz, what are your credentials in Oregon? Are you DEQ? Are you, do you work for DEQ? Are you a licensed engineer in Oregon?
No, I'm not licensed anyplace.
I talked to our licensed engineer and our public works director, Sue Nelson, and she said.
That's why I'm asking you a question, which you won't let me answer.
So, don't take a comment that I'm endangering the citizens.
May I tell you why you're endangering it, then you'll understand.
No, you may, I'm not going to listen to you because you're not a licensed engineer or you're not DEQ certified.
The federal court says I'm an engineer, by the way.
No, you're not.
It says I can't, I can't charge money for my engineering, but it says I am an engineer. Sue, going back to landslides and placement in this town, correct?
But what about, what's your question?
They're, they're a major problem, and we've got some strange ground here with landslides, correct?
Actually, we don't have a lot of landslide areas because of the basalt formation that's underneath the majority of the town. We did look at one other site for this reservoir. When they did some geotechnical investigation, they found that it was unsuitable because of an older landslide. It's, this was on the north side of Pittsburgh Road, so not in the same entity.
Correct.
Completely different parcel.
Okay, I, I'm only, only wanting.
That's not even on the agenda.
Local areas that have landslides. That's the point of my question. The next question, have you seen the dagami maps that show landslide areas in the lagoon?
I think we, I think we're going sideways on where we're at on the view.
Mall Foster's ability.
I would like to apologize.
We're not doing this.
I would like to apologize.
And one show they landslide, and that is not in their report. That's why I'm complaining about.
Okay, we understand that.
We have heard your, we have heard your argument. Is, does anybody wish to strike Mall Foster, Longy, looking to, to do the geotechnical work for a 5 million gallon water tank? Is anybody else opposed or would like to make a motion? Or is there any other discussion on it? Is there any other discussion? Are we going to approve and authorize for signatures A 3 through, or 3 through 6? That's the question here.
I do have a, I do have a bit of a question, and is there an attached financial figure to this?
Forty thousand, 40,000 the first phase, 30 the second, 70 total for looking at all the sites.
Okay, thank you.
John, sound of a right one?
That is correct.
Yeah, see, because I looked at it, Counselor Topaz, and I listened to John earlier in the meeting, and he explained it very well.
You've got a vendor that's not quite as good as you're talking about, and that's what I'm worried about as it comes to landslides.
Counselor Topaz, you have made comments about our vendors and also local contractors and citizens in our area, and I just want to apologize to our citizens for what just transpired. I, I deeply apologize. We, we should have covered this. We did cover this earlier in our work session, and it could have been discussed then, and we are really here trying to do your work, and I apologize for what just transpired. So the question here is, I have read, approve and authorize for signatures 3 through 6, and I will read them again if I have to. Additional service agreement with McKenzie for police needs assessment, number 3. Four, agreement with Mall Foster, Longy, Sykes Road Reservoir Feasibility Placeholder. That is a 5 million gallon water tank going up on Sykes Road to serve our citizens' water. It's backup water. Extension 5 is extension of concession agreement with Shiverme Ice Cream Mobile Truck. And 6, contract payment.
So I'm going to try to make the motion again. I got interrupted last time. Approve and authorize for signature items 3 through 6.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve and authorize for signatures 3 through 6. Counselor President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Okay, do we have anybody for appointments to city boards or commissions?
No, we don't have anybody this time.
Thank you, Kathy. Right, consent agenda for acceptance. Eight, Parks and Trails Commission, it's dated July 13th, 2020. Nine, Planning Commission, minutes dated July 14th, 2020.
Move we approve consent agenda for acceptance items A, items 8 and 9.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda 8 and 9. Counselor President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, consent agenda for approval. 10, council work session or council special session, work session, executive session, and regular session minutes dated July 29th and August 5th, 2020. 11, amendment to administrative billing specialist job description. 12, amendment to library assistant job description. 13, amendment to public works office assistant job description. 14, OLCC license. 15, accounts payable bill list.
Can move we consent agenda for approval, items 10 through 15 as read?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda 10 through 15. Counselor President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, now we have some stuff that we had in our work session that we are going to get to. It was a presentation of a.
Number one was a park bench donation?
Yep, yep. So, I thought it was a great idea. I mean, his mom donated his mom's name, a nice plastic bench in the dog park. Yeah.
Do we need a motion or just head nod?
We've been doing official motions last meeting.
Okay, I move we accept the donation of the memorial bench for the dog park.
Second.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to uh, accept the bench as a memorial um, at the dog park. Counselor President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Carlson.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, then.
Second item is the Wellness Committee Program. That's the bicycle rebuild and um, time donation.
So rebuild the bikes um, that were surplus property from the police station. A donation was made by the Parks Commission that had uh, more than that, but they donated five hundred to go ahead and do the repairs necessary to um, get kids active. And uh, a lot more to it. Um.
I had one quick question. Is, was there a cap on the amount of hours people could do volunteer service?
We did talk to the wellness program about making sure that the time was approved by the department manager so that we didn't have people gone at the same time or gone too many hours. Um, so it does have to be approved by a department manager.
Yeah, I just don't want uh, uh, to jeopardize primary services, that's all.
Yep.
Like, it might be more fun to work on bikes than, you know, dig holes, but we've got to get, got to get the job done.
Yep.
You want to make a?
And move we um, authorize the, the bike projects?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve the Wellness Committee of doing a volunteer-based bike fixing project to be donated. Uh, Counselor President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor uh, Carlson.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Now we have one more thing that we are going to discuss. Um, I think it was, do we have Mrs. Curry here?
She is.
We, we do. We still have three more items from the work session.
Oh, we do? Oh, wow, what, what?
Number three is the Zoom meeting policy.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
I move we put into place the protections in the Zoom policy as proposed.
Second.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to impose the Zoom security as proposed. Counselor President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Carlson.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
The um, and I, I do want to quickly go back. Sue Nelson just chatted with me to let Jenny know the rest of council. The maximum volunteer hours is two hours per month.
Okay, that's little. I was just afraid somebody'd be gone all day Friday working on bikes, that's all.
No, so two hours a month. Uh, the fourth item on the, from the work session is the upstairs remodel.
Oh, yes. Think it was a great idea. I think uh, moving people around uh, kind of makes sense to have uh, Jenny and Jacob especially in the same kind of pod area. Um, and it frees up an office.
There's a lot of dead space that we're not actively using. I think rearranging it is lots cheaper than going and looking for space.
Yes.
I'd like to uh, motion that we move forward with the remodel on City Hall on the second floor.
I'll second.
Point of order.
Motion's been made.
Uh, to that, can we add to that? If required, we bring in a structural engineer? Or how, how is, you know, the actual repair going to be handled? That's, I'm more worried about having, you know, a super competent person to protect our historic building.
I guess, you know, you could say follow all, all, all proceed, all procedures and all steps. It's like, go through the process.
It will be permitted to work and run the building department and building officials capable of making that call of engineering.
Okay, so the, it, there will be inspection and it will determine if we need somebody else to oversee the structure.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to do uh, an upgrade, remodel, so to speak, to City Hall. Uh, Counselor President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Carlson.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Last item up from the work session is the public works job uh, posting and process.
So, uh, discussion earlier was, we reached out, we had a candidate, was a number one candidate. History, if we went back in time, the history is we actually had put out an RFP months ago. And then COVID happened. And then we went through the applications and we narrowed it down to eight and we narrowed it down to four. And we did an interview process and um, that was, just offered a job. Um, I think it was in February that we put out the RFP. Does that sound about right? January or February, Kathy?
That's right.
Yes. So, um, and he declined. He, he declined. So we were talking about uh, just going through the whole process and going, uh, making it faster and smoother. Um, a faster and smoother process, um, just go around.
Move we go forward with a, a fresh process for public works director.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to start uh, to put out an RFP for a public works director. Uh, Counselor President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Carlson.
Aye.
Counselor Topaz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
So do we want to define some expectations with that right now as far as when you'd like to see, how long you'd like to leave it open? Keep it placed while we?
We do a little uh, anyway, rather than just tonight, about all the parameters we've got to handle, both in our process and what we're looking for. I, you know, I don't think shooting from the knee today is a good idea. I think we've learned how complicated the business has gotten.
So what, John, is, so what you're asking though, is there, is there anything we'd like to, how long do we want it open for? How long?
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking.
Yes.
The only reason I'm asking about the details is that are we doing the same process over again, looking for direction and expedite things? So we don't have to wait till the next meeting to talk about it?
Yes, yes.
I'm fine with posting it the exact same way you did it last time. The interview process may look different, but you can get it posted in the meantime.
That is.
That's my thought.
Okay.
Uh, if anybody would like an application poll, they, I think they could probably even be allowed to do that, you know? We have one on file still, so. Look at this call, Kathy. Is that sound about right?
I thought there was. No, God pardon me. I want to, I want to mute here.
Okay, that's no problem. Uh, okay, so uh, any other direction for John on that?
Uh, I'd just like to state that I think uh, with the council as the interview group, I think John should be a part of that.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that as well, that John should be a part of it.
Governing policy talks about that. It says the council and the administrators will be part of hiring and of the department.
I have no. That being, that being said, I think it's uh, you know how I spoke on it last time was that I, you know, he's going to be the, this gentleman or, or, or uh, woman's boss. Yes, yes. So.
John, how does the uh, these rules go on hiring this position? Are you allowed in it? I mean, it makes sense, but I'm now asking whether the charter allows you to be in it or not.
Well, the charter does.
Yeah. The, the charter allows the council to make its own rules. And the rules that they've created through the governing policy include your, your delegation of authority and powers and, you know, in this instance, in hiring and firing that it is city administrator works with the council in those decisions. I mean, whether it's equal weight vote or however you determine that, it's up to you.
Nope.
Ultimately, ultimately, they all powers like.
So you're not included from being part of the selection process. If the council says we want, John, we're not breaking any rules, correct?
No, we're not.
That is correct. Unless you change the rules.
Yep, okay. Um, so you got direction, John, on that. So now I'm going to ask Tina Curry to give us a report on um, the.
October.
Yeah.
Let's call it October.
Okay, Tina, you got the floor. We uh, have some questions as far as some citizens who are scared about Halloween Town and uh, are really worried about the COVID coming in with large crowds.
Right.
And uh, maybe you could explain to them what events, the, the big events that are not happening this year and what is going on? Um, and also to us as well.
Okay, I'm not sure how detailed you want me to be, but the first thing that I would like to do is to actually read the response that Sue, Sue Mueller received from us. Because I think that it really explains a lot of the information and um, and it will give you the tools that you uh, have to when you're talking to citizens. And I just responded to Sue um, last week and actually two weeks ago. And um, said, good morning, Sue. We agree, we definitely need to be taking every precaution with our tourism activities. Although this isn't a fundraiser, but a tourism event, it definitely does support many charities and businesses in our area. I'm not sure if you have heard, but we are actually limiting the number of people that can come to town on weekends when it is typically very busy. If we put up decorations, people want to come and especially on the weekends. If you just leave this to let the people come as they please, we believe we would be creating an environment without restrictions and with many more people than we are planning for now. By having tickets and limiting them drastically, we can control the amount of inbound traffic and ensure that proper precautions are made. You won't be able to just walk into downtown as you have in the past, or if you just wanted to take photos on the weekends without a ticket this year. Tickets are very limited to two hundred and fifty guests. Safety of our citizens is the top priority and this is the way we have to control over how many people can come. Schools, of course, are a priority, but they have their own challenges being that they are inside in closed quarters. Clearly, this is an outside event. However, we are following every rule that the governor suggests and retail locations will be following their rules as well. We can't stop people from coming to town. However, we are attempting to control the, the number and that they will be following the rules. Thanks for reaching out for your concern and allowing us to respond. It is well noted. So essentially, the, the, the impact that we are manufacturing by design is to not allow people to just come into town in any numbers because they're not going to be able to even get into Halloween Town between ten and five on Saturdays and ten and four on Sundays. Those are typically the very busiest times when people congregate, wanting to take photos, et cetera. You've all seen it. You all see what it looks like. If we just let people come to town, we would be inundated with thousands, I'm sure, thousands and thousands of people coming. So by blocking the streets, as I have shown you in this uh, you know, not to scale map that I just drew a few hours ago, because I'm not at my desk. Um, Matt, uh, I sent it to Matt and you can kind of see if we go to the bottom that this is the parking area right here. And we have multiple, um, you know, we have multiple signs, of course, helping people. But essentially, there will be two points where people come to check in. When they check in, we take their temperature and we, whatever the rules are at the time, are the rules that we will be enforcing. So if it's, a mask is required, then a mask is going to be required. But the key is that where you see this, the lines and over by City Hall, um, here, here by the county courthouse, over here off of First Street, the parking entrances and the alleyways are all controlled by fencing. So nobody is going to just walk into Halloween Town between those hours that I mentioned. They have to have a ticket to get in. We're only selling two hundred and fifty tickets. So between all of these, um, you know, standard procedures that we're anticipating is cleaning the bathrooms every hour, um, having hand sanitizing stations available, checking people's temperature when they come in. People inside the area will have to have a badge um, that is displayed so we know that they went through our um, you know, fencing system, or they will be politely asked to leave. And the street performers um, that we've hired, of course, are outside. Ninety percent of our activities are outside. And if you want to see what activities we have this year, you could go to our new website, which is spiritofhalloweentown.com. That will have an entire list of every activity that we have. We do have, you know, lots of things going on. It's a full schedule, but there's only going to be two hundred and fifty people. So we know from thirteen nights what that looks like. It does not look like a lot of people. Um, but that's what, you know, that's what the mandate is and that's what we're following. So I don't want to break any rules or make anything unsafe for people. And the way to control this is through, you know, basically um, street closures and um, by limiting the number of tickets that people can uh, you know, purchase. Do you have any, any questions about what I just?
Tina, this is Doug, this is Doug, and I'd like to know that if I was the owner of uh, of Plymouth uh, and uh, I know that they do, uh, they're in a, in a service, food service business as well as running dogs, as well as uh, the dock side. And they just happen to, things happen to be open. Is the two hundred and fifty people going to hurt those individuals? Uh, or is it something that, that has settled uh, okay with the, with, with those business establishments?
Yeah, in fact, I've talked to everybody. We have several merchant meetings. So all the business owners know what is going on. And you might see on the map that we're actually doing the check-in list to the uh, north side of Running Dogs across to Judge Grant's house. So that will be open. Running Dogs, Plymouth, Jilly's, um, The Roof, Roy Tide. Those will all be open to the uh, public. Anybody will be able to go there anytime because they are not inside of the fenced area.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for uh, pointing that out. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and then up on the other side, you can still go to the theater. And um, Mitzi is uh, Mitzi is, is in one way or the other. She wants to be inside or outside of the area with two Cs, but um, people still be able to go to Columbia Theater. The other thing that I want to point out that I think is really significant this year is that every ticket includes parking. So every ticket that, that is coming from people from out of town includes parking. So there is going to be no visitor parking within from fifteenth street towards the river. That, and that is, you will not be able to park there on the weekends from ten to five on Saturday and ten to four on Sunday unless you have a permit placard on your window. Those permit placards will be free to citizens. They can also receive them for guests so that if they have people that are coming to visit them during the month, they certainly can have guests come and park, you know, at their house. But this will basically stop, will have great signage at the street corners saying, you know, do not park here because you're probably going to get a ticket if you don't have a parking placard. So we want all of the inbound traffic going to the same location so that they are not in the neighborhoods. So we're trying to make every attempt to keep it as, you know. So we're trying to make every attempt to keep it as, you know, as safe as possible. I think John mentioned, you know, what happened and, um, with the bike rally, 250,000 people just went to that town. They didn't care that, that the mayor told them, "Please don't come here." They said, you know, "We don't care what you say. We're coming anyway." And, you know, we don't know what the results of that is going to be, but I just feel like it wasn't, it wasn't a really safe environment, probably, to have that many people in bars and on the street and without masks and no regulations. And, um, I think that this is a way to make it way safer for the people that live in St. Helens, because we're not going to allow people to come that don't have a ticket, basically. Now, you can go to the vendor village without paying, but, um, once again, you have to go through the parking scenario if you're not walking there like as a citizen. So everybody from out of town is gonna be parking. And 250 people is, when you think about how many 250 people is, it's not, and you go to 13 nights and you see what that looks like, it's not a lot of people in that amount of space. So I think it'll be easier to control. You might notice on this map that I sent, we will have two monitors at all times, just kind of roving and, and reminding people to keep their distance if they see something that they don't think is safe, or, um, telling them to wear a mask or pull their mask properly up or whatever, whatever the compliance is at the time. We don't know what it's gonna be eight weeks from now.
No, we don't know what it'll be tomorrow.
Yeah. So...
We don't.
Where, that's why I didn't put a big list of regulations on the site, other than to say, "We're gonna be following the governor's orders," because we don't really know what the governor's orders will be when we open.
We literally get about a three-day notice on those.
Yeah.
What we get.
And if, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that if we are shut down from COVID, there, all, but all tickets will be refunded in full. And we've had a couple people, you know, just said, "Hey, I'm buying tickets. What happens?" And, and that's what we're telling them. But we don't refund because you, you know, decided not to come, but we do refund if, um, you know, the governor's order shuts us down.
Yep.
So hopefully, we had an hour-long show on Kohi the other day where we went over this, and, um, you know, if you do read the Facebook, uh, Facebook page and the Spirit of Halloween Town page, which is new, granted, there is a lot of information on there.
I have a question. If someone, uh, contracts the virus here in town and they want to sue us, so we covered, or according to some of the insurance agents and policies, since the city knows there's a problem and somebody caught this problem, our insurance is invalid. Do we have a coverage if someone tries to sue us because they got the virus here?
We have our general liability policy, and I believe that the, I actually believe that the federal government has said that no one is going to be allowed to sue you for getting COVID from somewhere unless they...
They haven't passed...
...spit on you or something like that.
No, they've been, it's, they've discussed that. It so far has not passed. So I'm wondering, do we have a statement from our insurance that City of St. Helens knows that there's viruses around? We have people who are congregated because one of our events, are we covered? I want a direct statement from them that we are.
It seems like we went through this with the graduation ceremony, and we talked to Chris Iverson, and he gave us the green light for, uh, uh, the graduation ceremonies when they, uh, brought everyone through the plaza, the graduates. Uh, so I, I think it's just a simple, uh, heads up to Chris Iverson.
Okay. I think that it should be done. The graduation people were contained in cars to a great extent, as compared to wandering around in the dark. That's...
Well, they're not, most people, I don't know whether you, you've like been in Halloween Town, like after dark, but generally, there's a not a lot of people that hang around after dark. It's a lot less congested. However, you know, however, we would not know necessarily if someone caught it from a local resident or, uh, you know, uh, from an out-of-town person. I mean, we don't know that. That's why it's impossible, it's somewhat impossible to control, you know, unknown circumstances.
It's also possible to protect yourself from a lawsuit with those same conditions.
So a follow-up question is, there's no major events with the Halloween Town. It's a lot of little tiny, uh, things going on. The Ferry Festival was canceled. The, the movie, there will be no movie stars showing up, correct, Tina?
There are, there are, there are, you know, some, some celebrities showing up. However, we're not doing any pumpkin lightings. We're not doing any, um, you know, anything where we would say, "Oh, everybody come together or here, do this." That's not happening. So, and, and you have to have the ticket. So it's like, if they come, it will be within the 250-person ticket.
Okay. Any other questions for Tina on this subject that you find pertinent to maybe answering out there in the public? It's gonna be very small.
So, um, John's gonna follow up on the insurance question. And I heard Tina say, "If the governor shuts us down, she shuts us down."
Of course.
And that's all that matters to me, is that if the governor says, "Stop..."
Yeah, we stop.
You know, we're not liable, we're not over the, over a barrel to pull the plug at any time.
Correct. Yeah. And I'm meeting with, um, you know, Kiwanis tomorrow, actually, for lunch, to go over the plans with them. And, um, anyone, I mean, we've had a few meetings with people, but it, it's not, um, you know, it's not as, uh, intense perhaps as we think it would be, given the circumstances, because we've had a lot of communication with the businesses. And the, um, local citizens, again, can, you know, send us messages or emails, and we do respond to them, whether they, you know, read them or not. We definitely respond and try to answer them and ask them to, you know, call us again if, if there's another question that comes up or anything like that. So I would say the mass majority of the thousands of emails that I'm actually getting is, uh, from, as far as the local citizens go, is that they're disappointed that we're charging for tickets, because, you know, we have not done that before. And so it's like a learning curve to say, "Well, we wanna keep it so that we're not in it." You know, we don't have thousands of people in town. We're trying to, you know, level it out and, 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 uh, make it more of a moderate, uh, event without shutting the event down, you know, 100% and just, and just like letting the chips fall where they may.
But nothing, nothing, sorry.
Is the haunted house in operation?
No. It will be then.
Well, the, uh, building requires fire detection and fire suppression equipment for people inside that because of its square footage. Is that in...
Well, we're actually, we're actually in compliance with all the permits and everything else. We can only run the haunted house for 90 days. That's it. Then it's retail space. That's the, that's the law for that building. We've, we've had many meetings with the permit and the fire marshal when he was still around. And, um, you know, we're, we're definitely complying with, with the building rules.
Hey.
I had one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
I guess it's just question or confirmation, um, 'cause there are citizens that the ticket price is a steep climb, but, um, there's still nothing's gonna keep somebody from bringing their kids down on a Tuesday after four o'clock and taking a picture of their kids with the pumpkin. Nothing's gonna stop them during the week from taking a picture with the pumpkin.
No, I don't think so. That, then that has never been a huge draw. It's been a steady flow throughout the week.
I'm just thinking of, you know, because there's lots of people that they're like, they have their kids growing up, you know, like you mark your kids on the wall. If you take your kids every year, like Santa Claus, the pumpkin, whatever, that people will still be able to do that with their family. That live here in St. Helens can still come down and look at the arrangement and still take little selfies down there during the week and not have to worry about paying.
Exactly. Anytime after 5 on Saturday, 4 o'clock on Sunday, and every weekday, you know, of course, all week long.
Yeah. So that was my thing, is I wanted to make sure that little neighborhood kids are still gonna be go, able to go down there with their grandma and get their picture taken if they really want to.
But of course, we're not having the parade, to my knowledge. We're not doing the Little Scoops Parade, to my knowledge. We're not doing anything where we are asking people to come en masse and gather. That's just not happening.
Super. Sounds like you're following the governor's order, and that's what, that's what we need to be doing.
Yep.
Well, if anybody, if you hear anybody that has like specific questions, or they're like, "How can they possibly stop people from coming into town?" We have all of the information that we can send them or talk to them or, you know, meet them, even, you know, at a safe distance with a map that they can look at that's big, not like this thing I sent you guys. And, um, you know, with, and, and just show them what we're doing, because I think that it's a, you know, it's another learning curve with, uh, what's going on now. First it was tourism, and then it's kind of like, okay, this is another thing that people are going to wanna know about. And I'm hoping that they don't make assumptions, because we have carefully thought through how we can manage this.
Yes, yes.
Is the, uh, tourism group, uh, having funds for the overtime for the police that we might need?
Well, I'm in, I'm not anticipating that we're going to, um, be spending nearly as much on police officers as we have done in the past. Actually, it should be a lot less.
You, you are paying for the overtime, correct?
Well, I have no, I have no, um, uh, expectation of the police to be at Spirit of Halloween Town, other than normal, what they normally do.
Reinforce traffic, stuff like that.
Well, they don't even enforce, I don't know that they...
Not for Halloween Town, but they do for our, our city.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, you know, yeah.
Okay. Um, so, thank you for the update on that, Tina. There was a lot of questions, um, and, uh, we had a, a few people reach out to us on it, um, concerned, and you answered their questions, so thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now I'm gonna go into my report. Um, wow, uh, the work session earlier, I was thinking of, um, the Chamber of Commerce and just, uh, Dan, uh, his presentation was great and, uh, how they, you know, um, through adversity are really coming together and actually, uh, making some things happen there. And, uh, with the financial difficulties, um, of small businesses and the chambers relation to how they stay afloat, uh, you guys, they're doing a great job. Good boards. So then we had the CSAT, Paul Vogel. Um, that was, um, a good, uh, collaboration with the chamber. Um, beyond that was with, uh, um, the port. Uh, also, if you are looking for a PPE store and you are a small, I didn't think it'd be a small business, you can go out to the fairgrounds from 1 to, I do believe he said 4. Does that sound right, you guys? Does that sound right? Friday, 1 to 4. I wish Rachel Berry was here. She attends them. I want to say that's right, on every Friday. Maybe it's for small businesses, but, uh, um, you can go out there and get a mask and all the protective equipment you need for, um, COVID. So, um, yeah, the city's doing great. I mean, we, we got the, uh, we got, we're still chugging along. We're moving forward with the, the projects. We're talking earlier about, uh, our city minister, John Walsh, gave a report of, uh, um, the waterfront project and two different roadways of, of moving in the future. And one, um, will be through grants, and the other would be through, um, funding and, uh, reaching out for smaller grants. So, um, yeah, we're moving forward. And, uh, don't know what else to say to you guys. That's all I got. So I'm gonna have, uh, Council President Morton. You wanna unmute yourself, Doug? There you go. Not yet. You're getting closer. It's frustrating when you got big hands and you're trying to hit that little mute button. Doug? Uh, can I, should I come back to you? Give me a thumbs up if I should come back to you. No, there you go.
Okay. Permit?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. It's good to be back. And, uh...
Good to see you.
One of the things I really, uh, would like to do upfront is I'd like to, uh, express my, uh, sincere gratitude to, uh, the staff and you fellow, uh, council members, uh, for your, uh, encouraged, very encouraging thoughts, uh, during my recovery from my recent accident. Uh, it means a lot to me, and, uh, I, I appreciate the camaraderie from, uh, the entire city staff and, and you folks. So thank you. Appreciate that. It's good to be back. One of the things that, uh, I did have the opportunity to do is get around to the Marina and, uh, hear a lot of complaints about parking. And I'm sure anyone who goes down to the Marina down, uh, that area is hearing a lot of those kinds of things, uh, about the, uh, effects that Sand Island, uh, our, our, our water park over there has a negative impact on the parking. Well, uh, we talked about that, uh, from the get-go, from the design of, uh, when, uh, we thought about doing this. And there are places on First Street, uh, behind the, uh, on First Street down there that I think that we vacationed an 80-foot right away down to a 60-foot right away, if I'm not, if I'm not, uh...
We gave 15 feet, 15 feet both sides.
Okay, so it's down to 50 feet?
Yes, yes.
And so there's still room along that entire corridor, uh, for the city to enter in possibly with a, with a Marina and, uh, obtain, uh, you know, uh, parking in that area. It could facilitate many, many parking spots. So that's encouraging to me. And we still have, uh, we're still working on possibly designs on the egress of that area as well, uh, up to, uh, Second Street, uh, for safety, for safety concerns. So, you know, that's basically where the, where the city is. And as we move forward and we get more and more crowded, those kinds of things are naturally going to happen. And especially with a draw like Sand Island, uh, which gives a free shuttle to our citizens or to Sand Island so that they can enjoy that park. And, uh, it's been very popular for, as a tourist attraction as well, from voters in, uh, uh, outside of our community. So that, along with, uh, building some questions of, uh, Halloween Town, what are we going to do? Tina was very helpful in her report to me of how I can help, how I can, uh, respond to our citizens, uh, and I've got a much better understanding of what's going on. Thank you, Tina. Appreciate it. What else did I have? Oh, um, I'm really, really encouraged with what's happening with Dalton Lake, and I do have a question, uh, for the chief on this. There was a kind of, when we were talking about the management of how we're going to work with the Friends of Dalton Lake Nature Preserve and, uh, Public Works and Vector Control of how we're going to integrate all of those. I asked a question about law enforcement, and, uh, Lynn Pettit, who's chairman of the, of the Friends group, said, "Well, uh, that they, that they were, were not to contact the city..." Were not to contact the city police if uh, if there was a disturbance down there or some kind of issue. Now, we have an agreement with ODOT to manage that area, control and manage it. And so, it seems to me that if the police aren't going to respond, that leaves us kind of uh, at, at odds. For uh, management and control. Uh, so the reason uh, years ago. That we made Dalton Lake a nature park so that we could utilize the rules of a park. To, you know, sundown, uh, no, no one, uh, no camping and that kind of thing, no firearms and, and uh. Littering, all those, all those issues that, that we work with in our parks. So, um, Keith, we're gonna have to follow up with the, with the chief and, and make certain that we have that all our. Do you have a, do you have an answer to that, Matt?
I do, actually. Brian is watching on Facebook right now and wanted to respond that the Dalton Lake is technically in the county jurisdiction. And so, it is the Columbia County Sheriff's Office that patrols and uh, would manage any police activity that is requested there.
But we have the, we have the contract and the county jurisdiction now. Who, how'd that happen? Because when uh, Chief Salih was here, he'd send uh, he'd send patrols down there the whole time. So, when did that change?
I don't know that it ever changed, so to speak. I know.
It certainly did.
We have the manage, we have the management aspect as far as Dalton Lake and as far as managing the grounds and everything. Um, a while back, the city council, um, when Brian, after he just recently started. Uh, made the change in a policy decision of our St. Helens Police to not go outside of our district. Because we were sending officers to Scappus, Columbia City, Vernonia, um, while uh, kind of uh, non-emergency calls. Because we are the only twenty-four hour service um, that police have in Columbia County. Uh, and so, we were often getting called and having to pay for overtime and other things for um, non-emergency events. So, that was a policy decision that the city council made, um, a little bit after Brian started here. Um, to try and keep unless there is a um, life or death situation. Um, then the officers are requested to get, they can ask for permission if there's something going on that they want to go to Scappus. Or Columbia City or Vernonia or wherever that may be. Uh, but the city councils uh, was, was okay with that change. And kind of a policy direction as far as the police department was.
Really?
Yeah, it was, it was a little while ago. I could, uh, we could probably have Kathy or Lisa go back or, and figure out what meeting that was. But we had a, a fairly kind of lengthy discussion over a couple meetings, I believe.
And regarding Dalton Lake?
I, I don't remember Dalton Lake specifically coming up, um, but Dalton Lake is technically in the county jurisdiction. As far as police is concerned.
Okay. That's interesting because the whole reason for making that a nature park in the first place was so that we could get the police there. It's, it's really weird because I didn't know about this and I pushed for that and pushed for that and pushed for that. Because we had complaints about uh, individuals down there shooting, uh, shooting, uh, hunting. Uh, all kinds of things. And so, uh, it, it was a safety hazard for our citizens. And so, that's why we, uh, that's why we went forward with uh, establishing it as a park. So that we had a, we had, we could enforce those rules. So, it's, that's, that's a strange one. I, I, I'm not certain I agree with that. And I'd like to, I'd like to revisit that for obvious reasons. Uh, I just would, okay, so.
I can, I can definitely mail and, and let Brian um, get in touch with you specifically and he can talk with you one on one.
That would be the best.
Well, we could do Doug. I mean, we are in our regular session. Um, we could, we are able to make decisions in this meeting. If we wanna police Dalton Lake, especially the bike trail area, cuz I think they can drive a vehicle down there. Is that correct?
Oh yeah, so that's what we did. Those were the decisions we made when we walked that with uh, with Public Works and the Vector Control. And the, the uh, Lynn is the uh, chairman of the Friends Group. And she just wanted to know kind of like, if there were issues, how we could all work together. And then the, the, the other part of that was the enforcement. So, you know, I don't know.
I think I hear public safety there and, and I know that our citizens probably maybe a little bit more so. Uh, equal Columbia City, um, we're probably a little bit more than half utilize that trail, so. And that preserve, so, um, we did obtain the rights to that through ODOT, the. Yeah, so, I would, I would flirt with the idea of making a motion to uh, allow our police officers, um, Council lot.
Can we, can we uh, maybe postpone this for two weeks until our next meeting? And then I can talk to Brian about it and see what all the issues are.
I think that's a good idea so that we, so that we get all our ducks in a row that way, I think. You okay with that, Mayor?
I am, yeah, but I just. The place to do it, so that's why I figured, if we wanted, I had your back. No, Matt's replaying it. I heard my voice.
Oh, sorry, I was messing with Facebook.
Okay. So, there's.
Okay, well.
Facebook.
Uh, for the most part, uh, for the most part, that's my, that's my report and, oh, and Lynn Pettit, I think is on. Uh, she has to be on the agenda for a report uh, to the council regarding uh, Dalton Lake Nature Preserve. So, uh, uh, she'll be, I think, we will be seeing her, hearing from her in the next month or two.
Sound good.
Okie doke.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Locke?
Uh, just a couple things. Uh, I know Cascades is, is having some issues uh, with COVID and whatnot. I know they're really short staffed over there and they're working everybody overtime. Uh, number three is shut down right now. I don't know why it's shut down, but I find I'm finding out. I'll, I'll let you guys know why it's shut down when I find out. Uh, other than that, uh, for your information, a thousand board feet would be two logs. Approximately, two logs thirty-two feet long and twenty inches in diameter.
Wow.
And you, you measure the small end of a log. That's why they make smaller logs, is so they get more board feet out of them. So, anyway, that gives you a rough estimate about what a thousand feet is.
Thank you. You did some research on it.
That's all I got.
All right. Council Carlson?
Um, it's good to have you back, Councilor President Morton. I miss your cheerful voice. You were not. I was just encouraged by the positive reports from CSAT. That was just a light, night and day difference. From what we got from CSAT a year ago. So, I definitely appreciate all the hard work that group is doing. And how the community is kind of coalescing around that leadership. I really appreciate that. Youth Council continues to um, just mainly just keep in contact. We're slowly working on a couple of service projects. You know, COVID compliant outdoor service projects. So, I look forward to presenting the results of those in the coming weeks. And that's all I have.
All right. Council Topaz?
I've got a couple of things. Uh, earlier in the work session, we discussed about putting an RFP out for the Tourism. Uh, Director for Renewal or whatever. I did not see that brought up uh, in the regular session. Uh, so that should be put in. Um, the other thing that's coming is winter. And talking to a number of groups around town from schools on, what is gonna happen with the homeless? When they have no place to stay at Wom during the day? And thoughts about using the county fairgrounds or using, what is it, the rec hall over at the paper mill? Or wherever, but I think all the groups in town should try to think ahead of how we're gonna handle this winter. Because the library, which used to, at least during the daytime, handle a number of people, keeping them warm. Is unavailable because of the virus. I, I think we have to start planning for some other eventualities this time. Um, that's basically it. As I say, the RFP should be put back in. I think John was gonna do that, correct?
You asked for it to be on the next work session, so it's on the next work session agenda.
Well, that's all I had then. Thank you.
Okay, any other business? All right, uh, welcome back Doug.
Thank you.
Nice, yes. And uh, everybody say hi to Milo? Okay, you're adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.